And we'll go ahead and call this meeting into order. And as we go through the agenda, the second item is the approval of the agenda. And we do have a couple of changes that I mentioned this morning in the workshop. So very quickly they are. Recognitions, deleted item 3.1, proclamation to recognize the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Added item 3.3, recognition of members of our first responder community. Added item 3.4, Be Hope Now Inc. is presenting the Okaloosa School District with a $25,000 donation to support the peer support program. And so with that, colleagues, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Avancheck?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gardner. Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. All right, as we said on recognitions, 3.1 is deleted, and that takes us to 3.2. Proclamation to recognize the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2024 as Constitution Week, presented by the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman and School Board. So as you know, at the board workshop this morning, we spoke about the month of September. And we talked about Patriot Month, American Founders Month, we talked about 9/11. And one of the pieces of what we're doing is we want to do a proclamation. We talked about the different events that are happening all across the school district in our civics classes, in our U.S. government classes, as well as different events that schools are doing. And we want to do our part here at our school board meeting as well. So I appreciate the support of the board and the support of our school system as we take this proclamation to you. And I just want to take this opportunity to read it.
Yes, sir, thank you. I think it's a great idea. Colleagues, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Superintendent. All right, 3.1.
He's gonna read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
That's all right.
We voted it without him reading, but that's all right.
That's all right.
So here we go. A proclamation to designate the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it was fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd of 2024 as Constitution Week throughout the Okaloosa County School District, and urges all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves adopted into the regular session of the School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, the 9th day of September, 2024.
That's right, it was adopted. And thank you for reading it. And it was, of course, attached to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
But that was very good. Thank you, Superintendent.
I got the words mixed up, so that was my fault.
It's all right, it's a great idea. All right, so 3.3, recognition of members of our first responder community, presented by Superintendent Chambers. Superintendent?
Thank you, Dr. White and School Board. This is a special evening. And we have some individuals who are here with us, first responders, those in the military who firsthand had knowledge or was on the ground, so to speak, during 9/11. And whether that be in New York, whether that be right here locally in Okaloosa County. And for those of you who are here, we're going to mention you by name in a second. But during the workshop this morning, we spoke specifically about you. We're just thankful for the videos that you took part in. And this is going to go before approximately 30,000 students, approximately 3,500 employees, and they're going to be able to hear your story. And one of the things that we talk about in 9/11 is never forget. And that's something that's important. As you might know, the students today, they were not born back when 9/11 occurred. So keeping that memory alive, I think, is incumbent upon all of us. And specifically, we're thankful of your story and the heartfelt story that you told. And I know our school board members could not be more appreciative for you. Having local folks that students in this area can look up to and learn something about is something that we are beyond appreciative for. And we have with us, School Board, this evening, we have Audrey Adams, who's the Communication Assistance Manager for the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Department. We have Deputy John Woolforth, the SRO at Edwin's Elementary. We have Tech Sergeant Mary Gores, First Special Operations Force Support Squadron, Hobart. And then we have Tech Sergeant Joseph Gomez, the First Special Operations Wing, A-33, Herbert Field, who's with us as well. And I do want to mention one other gentleman who's with us, who's with us on multiple school board meetings, not necessarily for this recognition, but in the military and someone who supports us in the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office. And that's Deputy Hall, that I'm going to present something to as well. But for these four members who are here, again, we could not be more grateful. And we're going to call you up in a second, just to present you with something that we feel is a little special. But before we do that, our school board members might also have some words for you.
All right, colleagues?
Mr. Heinley?
You want to start?
No, I'm trying to do some math here, so. Trying to figure out the years, so go ahead.
Do you want me to start? I'll start.
Go ahead, Ms. Gardner.
I just want to say thank you. This morning, I mentioned I did watch your videos, and thank you for doing those. As Ms. Chambers mentioned, you know, our students did not live through this. But in watching that, just the feels that I got, just watching that and remembering that, and we don't ever need to forget. And thank you again. Those videos can go on and on for years. Thank you for your service at that time. Thank you for continuing your service. And those videos were, it brought back all the feels. We all talked about where we were, just those memories are so important for us to have. So thank you.
Well, living history is what I think about. And that is so important, especially to students. Because when you teach them things out of the book, it all seems like, you know, yeah, that's just something in the book. But with you doing those videos, and then knowing that you're local, that you're a part of that living history, that can have such an impact on students and make it real. And that's what, as the Superintendent said, we want to keep that forefront in their memory, even though they don't remember it, but their knowledge, because it is so important. And it does affect them today. A lot of the things that have happened, I'm actually old enough to remember that you could actually just go walk on a plane. You show your ticket, you get on. Okay? These students have never, never dealt with that. So many different things that today, even in a roundabout way, the safety of our schools came from that particular incident and went from there. So they need, students always, everybody needs to know that real connection, and particularly when you're a young student. So I want to thank you for doing that, because we watched it this morning, part of it on, I was mesmerized, and I remember it very clearly, standing in a classroom when it all came about. So I think it's going to have such an impact, and I appreciate you sharing that. I'm sure that's a very emotional time that you took part in, but to share it with those students makes a lot of difference. So thank you. And it's great to recognize you tonight.
Okay, what I was working on is, when I was in high school, it was about the same distance to Pearl Harbor that it was to right now. And so we all remember where we were, everybody. It's a life-altering thing, but our kids do not, the kids in school do not. And we were taught about Pearl Harbor, another huge loss of life that dragged us into war. So I really like what you did this morning on those displays, and we have to keep that lesson alive with our ongoing generations. So thank you very much.
And I'll just echo all the comments that they said. My father and my wife's father served in the armed forces. And having been a school principal, I know how important our first responders are. And we appreciate all of our law enforcement and our firemen and all of those good folks. And your words today were great. I know that the children will learn a lot from them. And my colleagues are exactly right. That's something that we want to keep in the front of our children, so that they remember what happened on that day. So thank you all very much. Superintendent?
And the last thing I'll say to each of you before we call you up and just prevent you with this, a small token, I can't speak for you, Mr. Heinley, but I can speak for each of these individuals to my right, those individuals right there at the table in front of me, and some others out in the audience. We were all at schools on that day. You all were either answering phone calls on that day or literally in New York. So couldn't imagine, and we know how it impacted us, couldn't imagine how it would have been there. So just again, thank you. And to Deputy, I see that you have two of your children there and your wife. But I'd say to your two children, is you see your dad, a real-life hero, and being with others who are here today, other heroes who make a difference for us today, and remembering that day, which is something that we hold in high esteem. I just want to thank leadership from the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Department for being here as well to support your people. So we just thank you very much. And I think on this occasion, I would ask that each of you board members would come down there with me as we present these.
I just want to say, so we have a school district challenge coin, so those of you in the military, you know exactly what that is. So we have our challenge coin for you, but then we also have this year, our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. John Spoelstra, created military coin as well. And it's to support our troops, so those of you who have the military affiliation, we're going to give that to you as well. All right? And our school board members, who are obviously here to shake your hand and say thank you, but we're going to take a picture at the end. All right? So, sorry, Gores, come on up.
Thank you so much.
That'd be the right way, so we can do the handshake.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek.
Gomez.
Have her name yourself, please.
That's all right. Of course, I left my sheet back there, so come on up. Deputy? We're going to get you in a second, Deputy Hall. All right. If y'all come on over here, we're going to take a picture. All right, I'll come over here, and you all get in the middle. Y'all get in the middle. Ms. Gardner's got me off of mine. You good? Want to be instructed?
You're fine. Um, yeah. You're fine there, and then Ms. Gardner, if you'll slide in behind her. And you will try to go out. Not quite that far. Right there. Yeah, why don't you go ahead? Go a little bit more. Just a little bit. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. All right, and I sent it to Nicole and Michelle at the Sheriff's Office. I'll do my, I'll write my job here. Thank you.
I knew you were going to do that.
Well, there's one right here.
You're right, exactly.
I'm going to take a couple, so you can smile. Thank you.
Deputy Hall, if you'd come forward. Come on. Come on, smiling. And this gentleman is always here, fantastic, so professional, so just appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank all of you. Thank you again, Superintendent. All right, section 3.4, Bring Hope Now Inc. is presenting the Okaloosa County School District with a $25,000 donation to support peer support program, presented by Ms. Peggy Brockman and Ms. Kathy Houchens with Be Hope New Inc. All right? Would you please come forward? Superintendent?
Thank you. And as they come forward, I'd say to this board, as you know, mental health is something that we all take very seriously. And I'd say, over the course of the last five, six years, it's something that in this school district, we've taken even more seriously. I've shared with this board before, I think it was Ms. Brockman, maybe six years ago now?
Five years.
Five years ago now, when Ms. Brockman came into my office and she said, what can we do even more so for mental health in our school district? And we were able to create a program that we have here today, still in our schools, which is Hope Squad. But these phenomenal ladies are in the second year of a boat-type of competition, where they raise funds, and they're here to present our school district with some funds to help support our initiatives. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over, and just, we'll probably have some words afterwards, but very grateful that you're here.
I just want to say, from our Board of Directors up here, can't hear me? I usually project pretty well. First off, this is kind of recognizing Superintendent Chambers for being a forethought for us to help us get it going in the schools. Without your support, it couldn't have happened, I'm sure, or it would still be in process. So thank you for your foresight, everything you saw, and you stood there beside us all the way through, everything we did. We talked about, our Board of Directors sat down, said, what can we do to do something to recognize your efforts? And we decided that this would be our opportunity to do this for you. So this is in recognition of all of your efforts that you've done on behalf of the Okaloosa County Schools, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And our dragon boat race is just two years old, but it should continue to bring more money, and we'll continue to support these initiatives. And I'll turn it to Peggy.
So as Superintendent Chambers said, we started this initiative five years ago with just a thought and an idea. And we are so proud of what this district has done and how, and it really was not without your effort in mandating the program in every school. And to this day, I still get text messages that, of stories that happen, and it just, you know, with everyone, we share them and we cry. And we just know that, you know, there are lives that have been being saved, and that is a wonderful thing. But he couldn't have done this without the school board. Because it was the school board in December of 2019 who voted to approve starting a peer-to-peer program in the school district. And then we initiated it right after that. So as Kathy said, we just want to continue to support that program. It has always been our plan to continue supporting that. You guys are up and running, you're doing great. That mission is really accomplished. We now are moving on to working towards developing and building with some other organizations, a youth treatment facility in Okaloosa County, so our families don't have to go out of the area. But even with that big initiative, we still want to continue to support the school district in their efforts. So without further ado, we have a big check. Literally. A big check.
It's the big one.
And then we have a little one to go along with it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's been our pleasure. Let me put you in the middle. Get in here.
Get in the middle here.
Better put the ropes.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One more.
If you use a smile, we'll check on you.
The official check. The real check.
I'm going to give this over to Ms. Gardner.
And Dr. White, I would be remiss, we did the proclamation. I have a proclamation over here to my left, and is it Ms. Champion?
Yes.
And Ms. Champion, who's also here, who's helped us with this proclamation. So we've read the proclamation, we've shared the things that we've done this week as well. Very appreciative to you, but would like to present you with this proclamation.
I am so sorry I played, but I went all, went that size of the weekend.
All right. We've been there, we know.
That's all right.
I would like to say, we're talking about history, and Constitution Week was instituted by the Daughters of American Revolution in the 1950s. They approached President Eisenhower, and he realized that there was a loss of civics and government being taught in the schools. And he made it an official week. So we support it strongly, because we feel very important. We have this wonderful proclamation that we wouldn't have the USA today if we didn't have that. So it is probably the most-used document for other countries to form their constitutions on. And it was a miracle, because they had very, very disparate, different groups of people. They had 39, 55 delegates, 39 of them were there fairly consistently. But they created this document in three months and one week. And it survived, because soon it will be just amazing length of time. So I am so proud to be able to support this.
Thank you.
And so proud to be able to help those children find it, because we've got lots of little goodies for them. So hopefully the teachers can, and again, what you're saying, where you learn it, you see it, you know. I remember my grandson, when he was in fifth grade, he played Ethan Allen. He got, he came with the hat, the tricorn hat. He went to school, man, he was proud of that. So anyway, so I'd love to have that proclamation. Thank you for doing that. And we would hope to see some of you down on September 17th at the, can't remember the name of that hotel, the one that they, the historic hotel.
Dolphie?
Yes.
Dolphie?
And it'll be 11 o'clock, we're going to have this ringing of the bells, which is what, when they finished the Constitution, they went outside, they played. It's so important, because they didn't have telephones, they didn't have all these things. So they started ringing the bells for the people to come and hear what they'd done. That's what it is. So we have that thing, and we hope to see you there, and some of the other people. We appreciate it.
It was a miracle.
Yes, it was.
I would have to take a picture. Picture it.
Thank you.
So much.
I'm trying to be so proud of this.
All right, colleagues, that now brings us to the public hearing portion of our agenda. So if you'll scroll down to section 15, all the way down. And so I will recess our regular meeting and call into session the special hearings for all of these different items. There are quite a few, and each one is an action item. Mr. McKenna, I'll turn it over to you, sir, as we go through these to call out the appropriate numbers. 15.1, sir.
This is a required local effort millage rate of 3.1310 mills.
Need a motion?
We need to have a public comment on each one.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, exactly. We'll get to that in a minute. Is there anyone here tonight to speak to item 15.1? All right, now we need a motion.
I'll move it.
I was close.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Avancheck? Second by Ms. Gardner? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. All right, 15.2, Mr. McKenna.
Basic discretionary operating millage rate of 0.7480 mills.
Anyone here to speak to this item? All right, now we need a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Avancheck? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.3, Mr. McKenna.
The capital outlay millage rate of 1.5000 mills.
Anyone here to speak to this item tonight? If there's not, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.4, Mr. McKenna.
This is the total millage levy of 5.3790 mills.
Anyone here to speak to this item tonight? Being none? Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Avancheck?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.5, Mr. McKenna.
This is Resolution 24-12, Resolution of the District School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, Determining the Amount of Revenues to be Produced and the Millage to be Levied for the General Fund, for the District Local Capital Improvement Fund, and for the District Debt Service Funds for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak to this item? If there is not, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Avancheck? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.6, Mr. McKenna.
This is the Okaloosa County School District Budget General Fund for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025, in the amount of $410,227,220.93.
Anyone here to speak to this item?
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.4, Mr. McKenna.
This is the total millage levy of 5.3790 mills.
Anyone here to speak to this item tonight? Being none? Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Avancheck?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.5, Mr. McKenna.
This is Resolution 24-12, Resolution of the District School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, Determining the Amount of Revenues to be Produced and the Millage to be Levied for the General Fund, for the District Local Capital Improvement Fund, and for the District Debt Service Funds for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak to this item? If there is not, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Heinley? Second by Ms. Gardner? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.6, Mr. McKenna.
This is the Okaloosa County School District Budget General Fund for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025, in the amount of $410,227,220.93.
Anyone here to speak to this item? All right, colleagues? Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Avancheck? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.7, Mr. McKenna.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Special Revenue Funds Food Service for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025, in the amount of $25,488, $488,611.70.
Thank you. Anyone to discuss this item? If there are none, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Heinley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gardner? Any discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. 15.8, Mr.?
Okaloosa County School District Budget Special Revenue Funds Other Federal Programs Fund 420 for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025, in the amount of $26,33,194.47.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this item tonight? Being none, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Avancheck?
Second.
Second by Mr. Heinley? Any discussion? If there's none, let's vote. Anyone here to speak to this item tonight? Being none, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Vancheck?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Heinley, any discussion? As there's none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point nine, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Special Revenue Funds ARP Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Three, S R three, Fund four four five for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of one million, four hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this item? As there are none, motion please?
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? Being none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point ten, Mr.?
Okaloosa County School District Budget Special Revenue Funds Other ARP Act Relief Fund four four six for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this? As there are none, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion, my Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? As there is none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point eleven, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Special Revenue Funds Miscellaneous Internal Funds Fund four ninety for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of twenty million, three hundred eight thousand, nine hundred five dollars and nine cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this item? As there is not, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? As there's none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point twelve, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Debt Service Funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of twenty-seven million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and eight cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this item? There's no one, so we need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Vancheck?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Heinley, any discussion here? As there's none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point thirteen, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Capital Project Funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of three hundred twenty-five million, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak to this item? There are none, so I need a motion, colleagues.
So moved.
Motion, my Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Gardner, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point fourteen, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget Internal Service Funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the amount of fifty-two million, forty-one thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone to speak to this item tonight? Seeing none, colleagues, I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? As there's none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Fifteen point fifteen, Mr. McInnes.
Okaloosa County School District Budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, in the total amount of eight hundred eighty-nine million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone to speak to this item? As there are none, I need a motion, colleagues.
So moved.
Motion, my Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
That's a big number.
I know.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck.
That's why you got it.
Any discussion? As there's none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. And this brings us to the last item, fifteen point sixteen, Mr. McInnes.
This is Resolution twenty-four dash thirteen, a resolution of the Okaloosa County School Board adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Is there anyone here to speak to this item? As there are none, I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion, my Mr. Heinley?
Second.
Second, my Ms. Gardner, any discussion? As there's?
The largest budget, I think, ever in this school district history, and of course, a lot of that is all our construction, but it's a big number, says we're doing a lot.
Sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax, yes.
All right, so no more discussion, we need to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. All right, so we'll close the public hearings, and we will now move back up to, finish all the recognitions, to section four, there are no administrative appointments this evening, section five, public comment, Ms. Mayor, anything? All right, section six, there's nothing there, section seven, we have the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Vancheck?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Heinley, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. All right, so slide down now to section eight, and this is the Superintendent's Human Resources Recommendations. Eight point one and eight point two were information-only items. Eight point three, employment separations presented by Dr. Hale and recommended by the superintendent. I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Eight point four, personnel recommendations by Dr. Hale and recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Eight point five, employee transfers presented by Dr. Hale and recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
Motion, my Mr. Heinley?
I'll second it.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Eight point six, out-of-field report for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, presented by Ms. Duran and recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second, my Ms. Vancheck, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Eight point eight, employee suspension presented by Dr. Hale and recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Heinley, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Eight point five, employees' suspension presented by Dr. Hale and recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Gardner?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Heinley, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. There are no items on the discussion agenda, section ten point one, we had Ms. Gardner that sat in for Mr. Bryant today, so Ms. Gardner, if you maybe could give us a little update?
I will be happy, I will be happy to, and I appreciate Mr. Bryant letting me sit in, and also the committee, and Ms. Vancheck, as you said earlier, those were some big numbers, and you mentioned sales tax, and so when you see the large packet that I gave you, that I think sixteen, seventeen pages of all the many projects, it's impressive, and it's extremely so, in that we have done this within a short timeline. If you think about building a house, maybe close to a year, and what we've done in a few years, it's just absolutely amazing. I'm not going to go through the large packet, you can go and look at, it's more detailed. I do have the short Cliff Notes, I asked for those, so that is the smaller two-page version.
Okay.
But again, tonight, you can read that. But just to kind of go over what was shared today, task order number twelve is a district-wide sales tax, and sales tax construction projects with the multipurpose buildings, there are six, and there are five that are complete, and Niceville High School is not too far behind, they're working on some sidewalk, sidewalk, and HVC and the epoxy flooring has been installed, so it's just right around the corner, and we'll have all six of those multipurpose buildings completed. Cafeterians, and there are six that we're working on right now, and Edwin's and Wright Elementary are complete, I think they're already, matter of fact, serving in there. Ruckell Middle School and Plu, the actual cafeteria is complete, they're just waiting for food service, there's some equipment that needs to be installed, as soon as that equipment is installed, they will be able to operate, the furniture's been delivered and it's been installed, so Plu Elementary, Shalimar, they're kind of in the same spot, the progress is being done, and they're working really hard there, so that shouldn't be too much further down the road. Task order number sixteen, you have roofing and canopy projects at Chalktahatchee High School and Lewis, Lewis, I'm pleased to say, is complete, and Chalktahatchee High School's also complete, the general contractor is just doing some punch work, glass cases, the totem pole, I mean, some of the important parts right there, but it is, they're using it, it's function. Task order number nineteen, we've got Richburg Schools, building twelve, the renovations, perhaps pleased to say that it is complete, the furniture was delivered and installed. Task order twenty, this was the priority roofing projects, there were seven projects, and again, pleased to announce that all seven are complete, that's at Longwood, Fort One Beach High School, Ruckell Middle School, Silver Sands, Laurel Hill, and Crestview High School. Again, no patching, we put roofs on these places. Task order number thirty, it was lighting at Crestview High School, that is complete. Task order number thirty-two, Kenwood and Plu, the roofing replacement project, again, that is complete, and the contractor, it's still open, because the contractor's just doing a punch list. The task order number thirty-four, at Meg's Middle School and Dustin Middle School, the work's complete at Dustin, there, except for the canopy, they're working on that, and they've begun demolition for Meg's at this time. Sales tax project for HB, HVAC, there you go, HVAC. The Crestview High School, they've installed the new chiller, it's complete, and the projects have been bid, we're waiting for, a contract has been awarded at Fort One Beach High School and Mary Esther Elementary, and the work there will begin soon. Thirty-nine, parking paving projects, Kenwood Baker, Dustin Middle School, they're, Baker, sorry, last name plays, the work has begun, and they're repaving, Crestview High School is ongoing. Project, task order number forty-two, at Pryor, the flooring replacement, is, again, pleased to announce that that has been completed over the summer, and all of the other, I think there's like forty-five, forty-four different task orders, more details are right in there. Something that was said at the meeting today, I thought was really interesting, and we've talked about security, over the last five, maybe six years, Okaloosa County School District has spent thirty million dollars for secure, securing thirty-eight of our campuses, and that's fencing and gates and things we can't tell you about, but thirty million, just over the last five or six, that's, we take it serious, don't we? Also, I wanted to mention that tomorrow evening, there was supposed, it was planned to have a sales tax committee, but it was canceled. Oh, it's not canceled now? It's still on? Okay, sorry. At three? It's at four, okay. So it is on tomorrow, at four o'clock, it's right here in the training room, and this is a committee meeting for our citizens, it is handled by Jason Belcher, he's the chairman, and then we will have Joel Linder here, he will be there to speak from the Jacobs Titan, he's the program director, and he will be able to give, again, update, similar to what I just did right there. And I just want to encourage our public, parents, to come to these meetings, or look at, we've got the records, the reports, this is all online, I often, and I said I'm not a real big fan of social media, because it does upset me, but comments that are being made, it does me a lot, but a lot of times, parents or individuals will, they don't quite understand why we did a multipurpose room, or why we worked on this project before we did that project, every bit of that, and again, sitting and watching that meeting today, there is, there is a plan. You shared, Mr. Meyer, the five-year plan, there's a reason why we do what we do, when we do it, and I just would encourage members in our community to come out to this citizen oversight committee, the members on this committee are all citizens, they are not employees of the Okaloosa County School District, they're watching every penny, and they're watching every project, to make sure everything is done properly. So instead of posting those comments on Facebook, then maybe come and get the facts, and then we can report the facts. Can you tell I'm just a little upset with Facebook the past couple of days?
Well, good luck with that.
So, good luck with that. But I'm glad to see that it's back on, and again, tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock in the training room right here in Niceville.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, thank you for that report.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and that's a good number, thirty million.
Thirty million.
Yeah, and that's just in facilities, and we didn't talk about the security contracts we have in place, and the radios, and I mean, it's just, the number's bigger, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely, Joel gave me that number, accidentally put in extra zero, and I had three hundred million, which thirty million's a lot anyway, but.
Yeah, it is, it really is.
And again, that's a short amount of time for thirty-eight schools across the district.
Yeah.
We have addressed, we take it very serious.
We're taking it serious. Yes, ma'am. All right, anything else there? All right, well, we do have an action item, and that's ten point two, authorization for professional services for CMI price validation for TPM Program Number Six Task Orders and Scope Modifications presented by Dr. Smith and recommended by the superintendent, so I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion, my Ms. Vancheck?
Second.
Second, my Ms. Gardner, any discussion? Being none, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Mr. Attorney, anything tonight?
No report tonight.
Thank you. And Superintendent, anything tonight?
Nothing further beyond what I shared this morning, but I would say, we do have a visitor with us this evening, Mr. Ken Kenworthy, with FISBIT, who is here, a former superintendent as well, but just very much appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
He's not in the superintendent business anymore?
No.
Oh.
He's still, but he's still working with him.
Well, I was gonna say, he probably enjoys the seat out there now, maybe.
He's much better out here.
Yeah, sure.
That's after thirteen years.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at that smile.
You know, yeah.
That seat is much more comfortable out there, isn't it? Not quite as warm.
All right, so thank you, Superintendent. All right, board members, we did some announcements today, you may have some others, but we do have a, an action item, first of all, and that's thirteen point one, board members travel to attend the Florida School Board Association Annual Joint Conference with Florida superintendents, so I think we've designated on here who's, who's attending that, and that's Mr. Heinley and Mr. Bryant, I believe, okay? So I need a motion then.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion, my Ms. Vancheck, second, my Ms. Gardner, any discussion? There's none, so let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.